Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission for Thursday, August 22. If you have a cell phone with you, now is a good time to turn it off. If you have an item about which you wish to speak to us today, you'll find some forms like this on the table in the hallway. If you fill one out, it would help us immensely with our record-keeping and just keeping the meeting running as smoothly as possible. For those of you who might be visiting us for the first time, the way this works is we have a little bit of housekeeping here at the beginning, which we'll take care of. When we get to the items to be heard individually, we'll ask each of the applicants to come forward, give us their name and address, tell us what it is they're here asking us for, and there may be some discussion. If there's anybody here who wants to be heard either in support or in opposition to that item, we'll ask them to come forward and do the same, give us their name, address, state their questions or concerns. We may have a little bit more discussion, and then we'll call each item for a vote in turn. First thing on the agenda for today is to receive the minutes of the August 8 meeting.
So moved. Thank you.
I have a motion and a second to receive the minutes of the August 8 Planning Commission meeting. Cast your votes, please. They are received. We have continuance requests.
We have one uncontested request, item B-21, SPUD 1147, which has been withdrawn. And we have new requests, we have four or five new requests. First of all, item B-6, SPUD 1126, deferred to October 10. B-11, SPUD 1149, deferred to September 12. Item B-17, CE 1002, deferred to September 12 as well. Item B-19, SP 534, deferred to September 12. And finally, item B-20, An Ordnance Concerning Historic Designation Process, deferred to March 12, 2020.
Is there anybody here who thought they wanted to be heard on any of those items today? If not, I'll take a motion.
Did the applicant on item number 11, SPUD 1149, request the continuance?
I believe so, yes.
So you guys wanted the continuance, is what I want to make? Okay.
Anybody else? If not, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to approve the items as read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue items 6, 11, 17, 19, 20. Cast your votes. Those items are continued. Do we have any new requests for continuance?
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Callcord Drive. I was just informed by staff that on item number 18, PUD 1730, that there are several people signed up. We were not aware of any protest, so to avoid everybody sitting here for what could be a long hearing and ultimately getting continued anyways, I'd ask that perhaps we go ahead and continue that two weeks upfront. I'll make myself and my clients here with me available in the hall to exchange information so that we could get together.
Well, I'm sorry, what item was it?
Item 18, PUD 1730.
David, will you all include me in that conversation too?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'd like to go.
Okay. Like I said, we weren't aware until today that there was any issue, but it might be easier on everybody's time to just continue right up front.
Is that acceptable to those folks who are here to be heard on that item?
I don't understand the procedure.
Come forward. The applicant is suggesting that since there are people here in opposition to the item, he would like to have it continued until our next regular meeting to afford him and his clients an opportunity to meet with all of you and discuss your concerns, questions, objections, and so forth, see if there's an opportunity to work those out or answer your questions between now and then. Is that acceptable to you?
Yeah, they said we'll visit in the hall, is that right?
Well, I'll leave it to you to arrange when and where. I'm sorry, you'll need to come forward and give us your name and address.
This issue affects a whole lot of us, yet most of us here were not even made aware of the issue at hand, and so we're showing up without having had any time to discuss it among ourselves.
Well, this will give you that opportunity.
A later date might be a good idea.
If it's agreeable. I think it's three weeks before we meet next. What's the date? I'm sorry. September 12. So I'll take a motion.
Move to continue item 18 to the September 12 meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue item number 18 until the 12th of September. Cast your votes, please. Anybody else? Thank you. We do not have any items on our consent agenda today, so we're going to move through to items to be heard.
First item is a final plat of Savannah Terrace located north of Southwest 59th Street and east of South Mustang Road.
Is the applicant present?
Madam Chairperson, fellow commissioners, Michael Osborne, Cal Valley Engineering, 14700 West 114th Terrace, Lenexa, Kansas, representing Zimmerman Properties LLC. This is a project that our client is intending to develop, an apartment complex there on the northwest corner of 50, northeast corner, excuse me, of 59th Street and Mustang Road. It's a fairly small project, 60 units, and as part of the development, of course, we would have to plat the property, and so that's what we have before you tonight, is this afternoon, is a final plat. It's a one-lot plat. We'll be dedicating approximately 700 linear feet of public road, 60-foot rideaway, starting on 59th Street and extending to our property. We've met with staff, we've reviewed the comments that are associated with staff report. We concur with all comments outlined with there, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
So you're in agreement with the technical evaluations?
Absolutely.
Okay. Commissioners, do we have any questions to the applicant? I do have some people who are signed up to speak. Shall we hear for them? Or do you have any questions to the applicant first? No? Give us a minute.
Thank you.
Robert Brown.
My question concerning...
Would you, I'm sorry, would you give us your name and address for the record?
Robert Brown.
Your address?
1121 Southwest 59th Street.
Thank you.
Okay. And this is my first time doing this, but my question is pertaining to the traffic and leeway that's going down that street. It has increased over the last 10 years, and we've just recently, about eight months ago, had a debt right there across from that entry that this plot's going in, and I just wanted to know what the city has as far as expanding that road or making it easier, more safer for this complex to be initiated into that area.
Well, street improvements are kind of beyond the purview of this particular board or the process of zoning a particular piece of property. Do we happen to have an answer for the gentleman's question? Do we know whether there are any street improvements that are scheduled for this part of the world? We don't know, I'm sorry. If you will speak to that gentleman right there on the corner in that colorful tie, he will put you in touch with people on city staff who can answer that question for you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Osborne. Oh, that's you. Anyone else? Commissioners?
If there's no discussion, I just note that the staff report indicates that it conforms with subdivision regulations and the zoning of record, so if there's no discussion, I'll make a motion to approve the final plat.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Final Plat of Savannah Terrace. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
The second item is an application by Cracker Barrel Country Store to rezone 4901 Northeast 122nd Street from CHC Highway Commercial to SPUD 1142.
Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, my name is Patrick Boggs. I'm district manager at Cracker Barrel, representing our home office. I run the Cracker Barrel there, East 122nd Street. We have that landlocked piece, actually currently wooded terrain area off the highway. It's landlocked, which is part of why it's needing the special zoning. We are buying the property from Pilot, or Flying J, right behind it. It's a very small parcel, wanting to turn into a parking lot for additional parking for our guests.
Commissioners, do we have any questions of our applicant? I don't have anybody signed up. Is there anybody here who wants to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
May approval of item 2?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 2. Cast your votes, please. Commissioner Hinkle, thank you. Commissioner Pennington?
Yep.
Thank you. Commissioner Claire? There we go. It is approved.
Item number 3 is an application by Jason Hutchinson to rezone 1020 West Wilshire Boulevard from R1 Single Family Residential District and SPUD 470 District to the SPUD 1148 District.
Is our applicant present?
My name is Terry Pollak. I work for TLP Associates, and I represent Mistress Hutchinson, who is here today, in this rezoning of this property.
So what is it you're asking us for?
What he has currently in this piece of property, it's on Wilshire Boulevard, of course, and it's a long strip of property, 300-foot wide, that goes all the way back south to the river, and currently, the front of 300 and some feet has been zoned in a spud already, the previous spud, so that he could put his landscaping business out there on the front. In the interim now, over the years now, he's hoping, now he's requesting that we take that same spud and just shorten it up on the front for Track 1, that will allow him to put his business up there, leave it up there on the front, and then allow a two-foot track in the back that basically goes back to its original plan, original zone, which was R1 zoning. And the biggest issue that we had here, and the reason we had to go through the spud issues instead of just plating it, was that Wilshire, on the west side of these tracks, is a private roadway that's there, that is in agreement between Mr. Hutchinson and his neighbor to the west, but there's no other access off of Wilshire because of the way the road terrain is. So when you get further back to the east, you run into the turnpike, and there's a little hill there, so there's really no way to give any access to these tracks with new cuts off of Wilshire based on the 100-foot distances that Oklahoma City requires. So we had to put in a special access agreement on the west side just for Mr. Hutchinson to get to his home, which is the very back parcel that will remain alone, and then this middle track will, everybody will access now off of that private road to the west. So there's no danger issue of trying to address Wilshire. So he's just, we're just asking to rezone it basically to a spud in the front, and then Track 2 is basically back to its original residential codes.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of our applicant? I don't have anyone signed up. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on this item? Do you have any questions?
I just have one, the MDS for your application on the signage, it doesn't specify a height. It specifies a square footage, but it didn't specify a height.
I used the original spud to make that, to create the other spud. We can certainly edit that and specify height on the signs. I don't, it's not my, it's my understanding, and I'll look back at him, that he has no intention to sign anything for your landscaping, not at this time.
I would recommend we include something there.
In the spud?
Yes.
As far as height?
Right.
Okay.
So you're requesting 100 square feet, is 8 feet enough height? What's...
I'd have to visit with him and find out, in terms of height?
Right.
Yeah, it needs to be, well, there's another brother, this other landscaping guy is just back to his west, so we would probably look back and see what he's got approved over there, but it won't, it's not a large, again, he's only got 140-some feet, and that takes in the rideaway. So he's going to put all his landscaping stuff into this smaller track, 1.23-acre track. And again, the only sign that, if he ever needed a sign, it would be likely on the, it would have to be on the access road to the west, and it wouldn't be, it's not a massive thing, is what I'm saying, it's not a large, it's not a giant landscape.
I understand, if we don't deal with it today, what's going to happen is you're going to wind up back in here three years from now, trying to amend this SPUD so you can have a sign, because city staff ain't going to know what to do with it, or you're going to try to go to the Board of Adjustment and get one, and they're going to tell you you got to come back here, so you're going to wind up here anyway. So if we could get a height that we can incorporate...
Right now.
Right now, because we got to vote on it, that'd be spectacular.
And 8 feet is kind of our standard. 8 feet is kind of the standard for mine.
If that's the standard, then he's fine with that. 8 feet it is.
Good.
Anybody else?
Just for clarity, the note in here from staff about should this application be approved, XYZ, do we, is that automatically included in our vote to recommend approval, or is that a separate item that we need to agree to? What is that?
Are you talking to you, Curse? It's a question to JJ.
Yeah, JJ.
We'll take care of that between now and council. We'll send them a request for the additional 17 feet.
Yes, we did. I had left off, and we had to edit it, that I didn't allow that extra 17 feet for the setback, and then come back 25 from that so that you had the proper rideaway width. So we've adjusted that in the document, but we need to make sure that it's adjusted properly. So you'll have, if you ever improve the road, that you'll have plenty of room for your rideaway on Wilshire.
Okay.
If there's no more discussion, I'll move us along. I'll make a motion to recommend approval to City Council for SPUD 1148, making the change in the sign provision of the MDS to limit sign height to 8 feet.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 3. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you very much.
Item 4 is an application by Development of OKC and HC 21C Land to close Fred Jones Avenue between West Main Street and West Sheridan Avenue, as well as a portion of the alley and Block 14 of Main Street addition.
Is the applicant present?
My name is John Michael Williams, Williams Box, Forshee and Board, 522 Callcord Drive in Oklahoma City, and I represent the applicant. And first, I want to tell you, for, I have a unique connection with this property. For over 40 years, it's been my pleasure to represent now three generations of the Fred Jones family and then the Hall family, and it was in the early 1980s that Fred Hall and I envisioned the concept that the old Model T manufacturing building at 900 West Main could be something that's really extraordinary for Oklahoma City, even though it was way out west in terms of the developed portion of downtown. So we traveled to other cities, we got ideas on how to create something that would be a people place. Well, it took a long time to do it, but now Hall Capital has in fact created the focal point, that is, the 21C Hotel, and Jones Assembly, and the West Village multifamily facility. And so toward that end, the, to make that happen, it's been a $150 million investment. A nice byproduct of this is, this creates a bookend on the west end of downtown by which property, undeveloped property, underdeveloped property, between the developed portion of downtown and the West Village complex, that infill, that area will be developed, and we will have infill development of the sort that we very much want. So there's one final thing to do, and that is to create the people place that's desired, we need to close to motorized vehicles this portion, this one-block portion of Fred Jones Avenue. Now, the closure is not with respect to bicycles, the closure is not with respect to pedestrians, it's closed to motor vehicles and the ability to have events there, to have festivals there that occur year-round. This is to be a year-round location for the entire community to come together. So toward that end, we want to also tell you that we, of course, have a Planning Commission staff report that you've seen that recommends approval. There are some very detailed requirements, each and every one of which we agree to. And I need to also tell you that we have, all of the owners and the tenants abiding this property, they support this and strongly so. We have letters of support from urban neighbors, we have a strong letter of support from the Board of Directors of the Downtown Improvement District, all urging the enhancement of this people-friendly place. And certainly, this is an example of, as Oklahoma City becomes more mature, we will have pedestrian places. Well, this is a pedestrian place, where pedestrians absolutely win when it's a pedestrian versus someone driving an automobile. Provisions have been made for garbage truck access and a variety of things, all of which are set forth in your staff report. Now, I noticed that we're item 4, and you have many items after us, and I have four speakers to call, but I have an idea. I'm just going to, in a very brief summary, tell you what they would say to you. And the first is Megan Holzheiser, who's here, she's at Hall Capital. She would explain to you the precise use of Fred Jones Avenue that's contemplated. She'll also tell you that she lives there. And further, she will tell you that when she first started at Hall Capital, the area where West Village is today, those were surface parking lots, so we've caused those surface parking lots to go away. Clay Moss, a senior official at Hall Capital, he'll come and explain to you in detail the master plan for West Village and 21C Hotel and Jones Assembly. He'll also tell you the benefits that will be enjoyed by the 21C Hotel by reason of having a place where buses can get off of Main Street and get over onto this particular portion of Fred Jones so they don't block traffic on Main Street itself. He further will tell you that Hall Capital paid every dollar of all of the improvements of installing new pavements, the new sidewalks, the new landscaping, they paid for all of that. The city did not pay for that. And then further, Terry Haynes, a professional engineer of SMG Consulting, will tell you that in his professional opinion, that the closing of Fred Jones Avenue will enhance traffic flow on Main Street and Sheridan. You won't have people making left-hand turns backing up traffic. And further, he'll share with you that you can see from the map that Fred Jones Avenue only extends one more block to the south, and then it dead-ends, so it's a road to virtually nowhere. And then finally, he will tell you that the existing traffic system is quite robust and fully capable of moving all the traffic that needs to be moved in this area, and that Fred Jones Avenue does not connect with the newly opened Oklahoma City Boulevard. So that's not a way to get to Oklahoma City Boulevard, because it dead-ends one block further to the south, that is Fred Jones does, Fred Jones Avenue does. And that further, that Terry will tell you, he's consulted with the city's traffic, with the city, with the city engineer of Oklahoma City, Eric Winger, and Eric Winger agrees with these points that he would advance. Further, the reason we're before you today was in attempts to get revocable permits for year-round activities, it became very, very cumbersome. And over the course of almost a year of meeting with Eric Winger, Eric Winger finally said, this isn't going to work, you need to close and vacate Fred Jones Avenue, so that's what we are doing here. Finally, Mark Befferd is here. Mark is an investor in the project, and a significant one. He'll tell you about his viewpoint as an investor, and he'll further tell you that from the standpoint of a developer, the closing of Fred Jones Avenue will result in additional expense to the developer, and very significant expense, because instead of the city being responsible for the maintenance and repair and even replacement of Fred Jones improvements, the landscaping, the pavement, the sidewalks, all of which in time will be necessary, instead because it will be, it'll be a private street, the result is the developer will pay those, and he'll tell you that he's glad to do that because this will benefit all of west downtown Oklahoma City. We'd be pleased to answer your questions.
Commissioners, do we have any questions of our applicant?
First, it's refreshing to see somebody else from the firm besides David Box come before the Planning Commission, it's so rare.
Second thought.
I was just getting ready to say, you've got some other items that we just prefer that you stay on.
David's getting up in years, and we're trying to hold him back so he doesn't overtax himself.
And my question, John, just for clarity, is it's not you all's intent to permanently close the street to other vehicular traffic, it's just to periodically, when you have the need, to do so? Is that...
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay.
There's not going to be barricades out there that keep people from coming in all the time, but there will be much of the time, because this is intended to be a very regular people place, very regular people place.
I have to say, I have very, very mixed feelings about this. I'm sorry that I did not have the time to get more focused on this earlier. Of course, I wasn't really even aware of it until we got our packets, but, and I feel like you're at somewhat of a disadvantage in that your commissioner unfortunately is ill and couldn't be here today. I haven't spoken to him about this, but I'm just guessing he'd think it was wonderful, knowing as I do how much he dislikes cars generally. I have some real reservations about sort of the whole idea of closing public streets, and you've all heard that from me before. These are streets that have been open and in active use. This is not an area where you're talking about streets that were never put in or never used, and the closing of them essentially for private use, I just have a lot of reservations about that, although I completely take you at your word with respect to your intentions for the property. Legally speaking, once it's closed and vacated, they can put up barricades, they can do whatever they want, they will have control of the street. On the other hand, it's pretty clear that there's been substantial investment, which I'm sure was not made without a lot of encouragement, you know, that there would be a solution to this problem, you know, and I'm talking about investment with respect to the street itself. You can go down there and see how improved it is. I would really like to see this item continued. I would like the opportunity to sit down with the applicant, with the staff, with the surrounding property owners. I don't know that that would resolve the concerns that I have. I think we need a better system for these places that we are promoting as good locations for, you know, walkability and food trucks and, you know, festival kind of atmospheres that are in fact, you know, public places. The system that we have of getting revocable permits and closings on individual basis for events is quite cumbersome and time-consuming. When you're talking about something that you intend to have in virtually continuous use for public events, that gets both very expensive and hard to schedule, you know, you're just hard to know. It's one thing to go get a permit every year for the arts festival that's on the same date and, you know, in the same place. But I do have also just some real reluctance with respect to the closure of both the street and the alleys as far as just the public places aspect of it. I think when you, when you have an area like this that is virtually enclosed by the new development around it, it tends to speak in a way that says, you know, this is ours, and it sort of closes it off, I don't, not emotionally, but, you know, visually or whatever, even though it may be in fact open to bicycle use or pedestrian use or even vehicular use. Once it's vacated, how long that will last is entirely up to those who have control of it. So I have some concerns, some questions... So I have some concerns, some questions, um, and, and some reservations about it, but I would like to hear a discussion from the commissioners on that subject. I guess before I do that, I would say, would you be willing to take three weeks? That's how long it will be till we meet again, September the 12th, and give me the opportunity to sit down with you and see if I can get any more comfortable with this idea?
No.
So.
Appreciate you asking that. If, um, if they have some reason for urgency and not wanting to delay, um, so I, I hear what you're saying, um, needs to be rare. I wouldn't always just readily agree to closing streets, but as he expressed, and if we wanted to, I'm sure he could hear, we could hear from all the different people he named, but he summed it up pretty well. We, I think we'd all agree, the drastic difference between what the area was to now, it's right near the jail. Who goes out and spends this much money, um, to, to that much improvement in that area besides this longstanding group? They're willing us to do all of that first before every, you know, if they had waited till every single thing was figured out like this, it's, nothing would ever get done. So they were willing to do it with just this one last, not one last, with one relatively minor piece to put the puzzle together. Um, I think it says something about them that they, they do all this and then they have to tie up, tie up loose ends at the end. Um, I, I'm not sure, I mean, given that they could go through all of that now and maybe convince you now, um, I'm already convinced, the city's recommending in favor unless the other commissioners, I mean, you needed to hear something else, but I don't know what else I could possibly hear subsequently, after hearing from all them or getting three more weeks or otherwise to change, change my mind in favor of this being a rare and unique instance in which this is an easy approval.
We talked about this really not closing the road. So, and I know Commissioner Powers said that you have the power to do and be whatever you want to be if this passes, but 360 days out of the year, from eight to five, the road's going to be open and 52 times a year, you're going to close it on a Friday night for a festival? Or is this going to be closed all day long for arts festivals for weeks on end? I know you don't know the answers to this completely yet, but your intent now seems to me to be having the ability to close it 10 times a year, 15 times a year, 25 times a year, whatever it works out to, but it's not a daily occurrence and it's not interfering with the flow of the day on a regular basis. Am I reading you right on that?
It'll be, it'll be closed frequently. It'll be closed when there's, when there is an event. And our goal is to have events as often as possible. Now, how many events is that? You know, if you had, uh, if you had five a month, well, you can do the math.
Sure.
Uh, but it, the, our hope is that it's closed quite a little bit. That's the goal. I mean, we're doing this because we want to have festivals and whatever the market will allow, if we don't have people coming, we're not going to close it.
I don't know that even if they were asking us to close it on a permanent basis, it would change my view of the application. I mean, I, I think when I looked at this, when I looked at the staff report on this, there's two things that catch my attention. One is the TE has obviously been very carefully negotiated. We've never seen a TE like this. This is very clearly a long discussion that probably took many, many back and forth to complete, I would venture to guess. And the other thing that's the most important to me, when I looked at this, I flipped back through because I missed it, Streets, Traffic, Drainage and Maintenance put an asterisk, not no comment, an asterisk, which means they do not have an adverse feeling about it. They have no objection. So if they had an adverse objection, then I think we should talk about it. But generally, just passing, um, any application on in a continuance where making an advisory recommendation when there's no protest, which I'm assuming there's not or somebody would have spoken up, and when we have an approval or a recommendation for approval from staff, seems silly to me. I just assumed that even though I'm not a traffic engineer, the smart people saw what I saw, which that this is an obvious street closure to create placemaking, to basically streamline traffic between the newly opened Boulevard and Classen where they're trying to funnel people anyway, and to keep it off of side streets that don't go anywhere. So continuing this case is, I, I certainly don't support that. I think if they were going to close it permanently, I would still support the application. I think here, whether they close it 300 times a year or 28 times a year, to me, doesn't make any difference. They clearly can't keep it closed perpetually by the, the language they've created. I, I think we should, I think we should move on it. We should act. And I think we should approve it.
I don't disagree. I'll second, if you're moving approval, I'll second.
Okay.
I haven't asked if there's anybody else here to be heard.
Okay.
Is there anybody else here to be heard on this item? Would you come forward, sir? Give us your name and address, please.
Merle Pulver, uh, 7809 Northwest 84th Street. Uh, just, I'm here for issue 16, but on this, my question is parking. I don't see, if you're going to have hundreds and hundreds of people, uh, will this affect the parking? Thank you.
There is a little bit of parking along the street, I note.
There, there are a few on-street parking spaces now.
But.
We have hundreds of structured parking spaces too.
Also, am I, am I wrong, JJ, that they don't require parking in this area? So that is not a factor in our consideration. I think you're right to think of it as, I mean, I, you definitely should think of it as if it was closed all the time, would you vote for it or not? I mean, that's, that's the right way to look at it.
And just to clarify, legally, it will be closed permanently because we'll be vacating it in district court, but they will have these provisions in here that will allow some pedestrian access and things like that.
Added perk, we're losing one city block of 5,000 roads to maintain.
And there's also a new parking garage right there, right? It's now open? Yeah. I mean, that's got to help for sure because parking was horrible there and that garage has got to help a bunch. There's, you know, valet was the only way that I wanted to park in that area.
Well, I might add that I'm encouraged by the fact that there are no neighboring businesses that are objecting to this idea. I think that's important.
Yeah, and, and again, I was just, my, my reservations, I wouldn't even call them objective, my reservations are sort of philosophical in nature, if you will. The city holds lights of way and trust for the public and I, I just have, you know, difficulty.
No, I mean, if, if, if somebody from traffic had, had opposed this in our staff report and then come up and said, closing this street will adversely affect traffic flow in this area, I would say it's a pretty easy decision. Uh, without that, I think it's, it's a pretty easy decision. The other way, um, as I said, we could get on long tangents about placemaking, where's ASO when you need him? But it's, it's pretty obvious what they're trying to do and, and this is an important anchor development that we want to make placemaking happen. So this, this pushes that along.
I, I think all that's true. Anybody else who wants to be heard? If not, I thought I heard a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval to City Council, uh, on CE 996.
And a second.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second to approve item number four, CE 996. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you.
Item number five, SPD 1139, an application by Aurora House Company to rezone 2944 Southwest 8th Street from R1 Single Family to SPD 1139.
Good afternoon, Mark Groves, 1800 South Sarah Road, on behalf of the applicant. Um, this is a case that was before you and continued two weeks from last time to meet with the neighbors and, uh, discuss. And, uh, two of the commissioners were there, one of which is not present today, Mr. Highsmith, so, um, we, we discussed, uh, so just to recap it, it's a small, uh, event center and glamping concept with the air streams that are fixed in that location. Um, we, approximately three weeks ago, we, uh, took this before the scenic river overlay and it was approved by, recommended for approval to this commission by the scenic river overlay. Um, we, uh, met with the neighbors last Monday, uh, went over several things. Um, so all the uses in this, uh, spud before you today, they're associated with the event center and the glamping concept, okay? So every, every use in here is thought to be needed for that use, that specific use. And I think we've clarified that within the spud.
Excuse me, before you go forward, actually, what we talked about was, uh, having the spud reflect that those uses were accessory to the event center.
Correct.
And we agree with that.
Which I think that's what we spelled out. And if it's not clear with staff, I will work with staff.
I think that's kind of a term of art.
We agree to that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, we've agreed to work with staff to reword, uh, the, um, the RV use unit for the, the campground use unit to make sure that if this use were to go away, it could never be just a recreational vehicle. But I think that's pretty well clarified with the association with the glamping event center concept. But I'll work further with, uh, JJ and staff to, to make sure that we're clear on that. Um, to address the issues of the noise, we've agreed to limit outdoor, any outdoor associated music to 10 o'clock, any indoor associated music to 11 o'clock. We've, uh, we would, we're going to modify, and I've spoke with JJ about this also, but we're going to modify the use unit, eating establishment, fast food with drive-through to only allow for a walk-up door with no order board, or a walk-up window with no order board. So they can come up there, grab something through a window. We just want to make sure that use is covered, okay? Um, we've, uh, we've discussed parking as far as we agreed to the minimum parking as shown on the concept into valet for events. Um, the, it is a small event center. We're, we're, we're going to, we're limiting the size of the events to 100 people. So, um, it's 4,500 square foot events, uh, event center approximately is what's shown is not the final design, but those are, events are limited to 100 people.
So, Mark, just to clarify, so like use units, for example, of spectator, sports and entertainment restricted, which by use unit ordinance limit to 500, you're willing to limit that to 100?
I think we're agreeing to limit that to 100. The, um, there was some concern of screening the parking, uh, and we've agreed to screen the parking with landscaping. Um, we think this is a great addition, great addition to the area, to the river. Um, where was some, uh, a private investment, you know, to, um, invest in the, in the river frontage and we think it'll enhance the community. I'll be happy to, if I didn't clarify something, I think that after that meeting with the neighbors, I think I, majority of people told me they thought this would be a good addition, even though that they had some questions and reservations. I think I heard each one of them, and I may be wrong, but I think I heard each one of them say that they're excited about it. And, uh, and, and I hope that's the case. I hope I'm not misrepresenting, but I'll be happy to ask any questions.
So the other things that I remember from our discussion were about security and about, um, lighting. Um, but we, we agreed through our discussion, I thought, that those things could be left to code, in whatever the requirements of the code are will be met and, and, um, the other thing was about the, um, securing the structures. But again, we decided that that would play out through the permitting process.
I think that, um, I think that what I remember, the security, and she's speaking of, is security for the people that attend the event center. They really claim that this is a, you don't understand how rough of an area this is kind of deal, that you'll, that people like, you know, come through there and live there that are not supposed to be there, things of that nature. And, you know, as a business owner, they're going to protect the people that are there. Um, we're not, we're not going to fence that in, nor does the scenic river lay, overlay want that or anything of that nature. The lighting, yes, we'll light it to meet code. We don't want to spray on the residential as code says, but we do want to make it safe inside. Um, so that's what I.
Was there anything else? I don't remember anything else that we discussed.
Um, I think Ali brought up environmental concerns or something, but I don't, I didn't.
I think we answered all of that.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
You, you told us this is going to be tapped into city sewer, these units are going to be tapped into city sewer, right?
It is.
Yeah, yeah, it's all.
There's sanitary sewer running through the alley in the middle, so.
Okay. I do have two people sign, or two people signed up to speak. Um, do we have any questions of our applicant before I do that?
I just have, I have one, or one or maybe two. The, the automotive parking lots, 8300.13, that use unit is as a principal use. Why is that needed as it relates to?
We specified that it's accessory to the use. I, I mean, if it's not needed, then I'm willing to strike. If, as long as, as long as I'm covered for my parking on there, then I'm, we're willing to strike.
Yeah, yeah, that, that use unit always makes me nervous because of the fact that it allows you to use it as a principal use. It's, I just.
Yeah, we're, we agree with that.
I don't know if anybody else has any other feeling there, but to me, it just makes sense because it's not needed for your operation to.
I'm all in favor of that. I, again, though, we did agree that all of the uses that are listed are accessory to the event center, so.
I totally agree. I just don't want to get trapped where somebody keeps an event center and then, you know, puts 80 parking spots on there for five bucks of space and, you know, so I don't know. It's just, I want to say, sorry.
I'm all for that.
I was correct. You said outdoor 10:00 PM, indoor 11:00 PM. Those were hours of operation?
Those hours are what we agreed to, the mute, any event music. If you have a wedding and it has outdoor music, that music would stop by 10:00. And then if you have indoor music, then that music would stop by 11:00. People would be asked to leave and cleanup has to happen after that, so.
Anyone else? Um, Curtis Dewey, is that right, Dewey? Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name's Curtis Dewey, 1109 South May Avenue. I'm representing Best Price Auto Salvage. Uh, I'm just going over the notes from our August 19th meeting. Let's see. So the first issue we wanted to discuss is the idea of the valet. We want to know if there's been any conclusion of where we're going to park the valet vehicles as well as where employees are going to be parking. Ali wanted to bring up that not one person has attempted to calculate how many vehicles will fit on the street for parking on 9th Street. Uh, sounds like they've agreed to the 100-person capacity. What guarantees us that, uh, as neighbors that it's going to be upheld? Uh, is it going to be written to the structure of the zoning and what repercussions will be of exceeding capacity? I wanted to see if this can be written into the language of the spud.
I'm sorry, what are you asking about that?
Uh, they, they won't exceed capacity though. Like if, if they go over 100, what's going to happen?
Yes, that will, that will be written into the spud.
Perfect. Um, for the glamping design, what guarantees us as a neighborhood that all will be air streams and not just random RVs now in the future? We're for it, we just don't want to see an RV park in our backyard.
And so I believe that even as it is written now, the SPD would not permit that, but they've agreed to work with staff to make sure before we get this to City Council that that piece of it is airtight.
Perfect.
Um, the, the look of the structures themselves, the fact that, that whether they're air streams or not, I don't think is something that we can write into the SPD.
Okay.
Um, what was the other thing you asked? Parking, the parking that is shown is what is being approved. We do not have the ability through the zoning process to require them to commit or explain, uh, their valet system.
Okay.
And we don't, we don't do that with anybody, so.
Okay. Uh, let's see, just a couple more things. Um, state in the spud, it sounds like they've already agreed to it, to remove the language of the drive-through of the spud. Um, one more thing, food, uh, I guess we agreed the food trucks will be allowed. We're just requesting that the food trucks park in the parking lot and not in the street if the event's prior to 6:30.
They have to do that.
Okay.
Don't say, JJ, they can't park in the street, can they? If there were food trucks on the side, they couldn't park in the street, could they? No.
Uh, only, last thing, I just want to see if there'll be language guaranteeing that curfew of 10 for the outside events and then 11 on the inside events.
That's being written into the spud as well.
Perfect. And that's all my concerns. I appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you. Kenneth and Lynn Holland.
Hello, my name is Kenneth Holland, I live at 2941 Southwest 10th, and my, my question is, is a lot, the lot that they're going around, if the door was to open for them to be able to purchase that property, what do, what do they intend to put there?
Um, we, that's kind of not part of this process, it's not part of the zoning request, so we don't have any control over that.
But, but they'd have to come back.
Yeah, yeah, they couldn't, they, that's right.
They're restricted to the area that they have now, so if they wanted to expand it, they'd have to come back and rezone that parcel as well, so we'd have another chance to look at it, hear from the neighbors, you'd be noticed again, all that stuff would happen.
Okay, and, and to, to say, to talk about the fencing that they don't want around that, I think that that would ruin what they're trying to do. I just, if they'll just landscape that parking lot and anything they can, I think it's going to be awesome.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your time, and I thank them, and y'all have an awesome day.
Thank you.
So you would advocate that we not have them fence the front of a parking lot that would basically face back out to 9th Street?
Uh, yeah, well, that's, they, they said that they wasn't going to put any fence up, and, I mean, yeah, it'd be nice to have that screened, but they're, they're saying that they're going to screen it with some landscaping and, and, you know, and buffer it and stuff, and if, if, if you think a fence would be good for that, but wouldn't look, I guess, isolated or commercial or something.
The discussion about the fencing had to do with, back to the point of security, the folks who came to the meeting were very concerned about people who were utilizing the facility, that they be secure. They, the comment was made, that, well, we don't intend to put a fence around the perimeter of the thing and make a fortress out of it, and everyone there agreed that that was not what they were asking for or what they wanted, so.
But Mark had indicated that they wrote that in, I'm assuming to the fencing and screening portion of the MDS, that they'd written that in, so I just wanted to make sure we talked about that when it got back up.
Yeah, they, they had, we'd, they'd said, told us that they were going to landscape there in front of the, the parking lot and what have you, and anything that, and kind of buffer the sound a little bit and just make it, because that, that's going to be, that's going to be nice. And I just, I think it's going to be, I think it's going to be cool.
Thank you.
All right, so y'all have a wonderful day.
Thank you for coming down, I know this is not the easiest thing in the world to do. And I don't have anybody else signed up, was there anybody else who wanted to speak? Commissioners?
I'll jump out there, my biggest concern on, on the project is just the parking, the site plan shows 32 spaces, so even if you've got two people in every car, you're at 64, that math is pretty easy. I think the only thing that concerns me is just the overflow impact that a large event would have on the side streets and those roads, I mean, other than that, I don't have a lot of concerns. You know, Scenic River is really looking at it from a design standpoint, we're looking at it, in my view, from a practical standpoint. So I appreciate their comments, I think it will be a nice addition to the riverfront area, but there's a neighborhood here that I'm a little concerned about, too, so, I mean, other than that, I think, you know, the applicant's done what they can to address it. I would not be in favor of, of a fence, I'd much rather see them landscape it personally, I think that's a better element for the neighborhood, it's a better aesthetic element, and it seems like you guys would be willing to, to do that piece, is that fair? So those are, I mean, those are my general comments.
I would just say, on the parking, as a business owner in, in an event center, you're not, you're not going to want to have a, an event center like this and not provide a place for your people to park. So they fully intend to valet this, and I've never heard anything different that's been from day one for anything, any event that exceeds that capacity, so I'm very comfortable with that, and, and also, you know, there's that parking lot there, and we're showing 32 spaces, I think we can increase that just a little bit through just design and striping, but anyway, so.
That's just the only thing I see, that, as you balance the appropriateness of the development for the river against the impact that will have on, on the neighborhood there, it's just trying to balance that out and be fair, that's the only thing I see that, that causes concern, and you know this, it's, it's like if, you know, if you guys leave and somebody else comes in, they got a 100-person event center they're operating, and maybe they don't have the same valet, you know, protocol, so it's, it's just, that's the only thing, it's not determinative for me in terms of how I feel about it, I just want to make sure that we're having that conversation, because I think that's the only thing that's really at issue here, because everything else has been satisfied, to the neighbor's liking, anyway.
I think, I think we're all getting used to going to places and not having enough parking, being downtown, you know, walking a little bit, but anyway.
To be fair, you could get to this location now by bicycle from Lake Hefner, so, you know.
Right, yeah.
Someone, Cindy, put that in the record and put it in the minutes next time for ASAT.
Anyone else? That'll take a motion.
I move approval of SPD 1139.
Are we comfortable, staff, Mark made a lot of comments about things that had changed from the staff report that's in front of us, that they'd amended the master design statement, are we, do we need to make any amendments in Commissioner Kopp's motion or anything like that?
I can run over those just-
I have a list, and I'll provide that to staff.
I made notes on all of them, and I will put those in the minutes, and then Mark and I'll meet and go over them.
Okay, okay.
My second.
I have a motion, a second to approve item number five, with the amendments and adjustments recited. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Item number six has been continued, item number seven is an application by the Oklahoma City County Health Department to rezone 6900 South Walker Avenue from R1 to SPD 1143.
Sorry, oh, there you are, I'm sorry. Give us, in the middle, please, give us your name and address for the record.
Jason Cady, architect with Mass Architects. Home address, or?
Any address will do, any place we can get ahold of you.
1200 Leslie Lane, Norman, Oklahoma.
And tell us what it is you're asking us for.
Um, a SPUD to basically hold a sign. City County Health Department recently built the new Southern Oaks facility off of South Hudson Avenue, they connected the, the street number 68 around the circle, back onto Walker. This is basically just to give them a, a presence out at Walker, along with the other, the Southern Oaks Library and the Rec Center.
Um, I, I have a lot, first of all, there's a TE that would limit your EMD signage to an EMD one?
From a three to a one, yes.
Yeah, are you comfortable with that?
I've spoke with them, and they're, they're, they think they can deal with that. Their current sign out on 63rd Street is a level three, so their content, they wouldn't have to arraign, you know, change content, they could go from one to the other fairly easily, this, they just have to change it to aesthetic.
Okay. I, even at EMD one, I have to say, I'm not crazy about the idea of EMD signage directly across the street from residential development, and this is, we had talked before the meeting about the possibility of, of shielding the sign, and I don't exactly know how that works, but we've done it before. Can you explain to us what, what we have done in the past?
I was going to say, their, City County Health Department typically would, you know, they don't do events after hours, so they had no problem with following the, turning it off basically from dusk till dawn.
Oh, I like that idea.
So, and I think I had that in the, at least on my drawing sheets, as far as the knit requirement for after dark. Janice, the shielding comes from the factory. You can order the signs that have louvers that are left on one side and right on the other side, so the light shines out, and that way, if the shield is on the left, so on the south side of the sign, you would shield the left side of it, so it wouldn't shine over into the neighborhood.
Okay.
And same thing on the right side, I mean, that's real common in the billboard industry to-
It's very common.
Shield whichever way you don't want the light shining, and it's just by a louver on the face panel of the sign that-
So you can see it as you're approaching, but it doesn't-
Right, if you were to stand in front of it, you could see it, but the further to the left you'd move from it, eventually you'd get to where the shield would block the light from you completely. Now, at nighttime, you'd still see the light coming out from the front of it, but you wouldn't be able to read the message. So a house 300 yards down the street would possibly still see the light from the sign, but there, the house that's across the street, it's not going to be a drive-in movie theater in their window at night.
Okay. So, but you think they would be comfortable with the idea of turning it off from dusk till dawn?
Yes, or putting it on like a date and time or something, I mean, it would be, I think we could adjust, but I don't have a problem with it, and I don't think they would.
Okay. Commissioners, do we have any questions for our applicant?
My question is the non-accessory wording in here. Non-accessory means that you'd have the availability to sell advertising on it to somebody who is not a tenant there. An accessory sign means you're advertising for-
I've got it, yeah.
Non-accessory, you could put Coca-Cola, Burger King, or-
I don't believe that was there. The, the intent was their, City County Health Department is, is purchasing the, they'd build the sign and pay for it, maintain it. They have a, an MOU basically with the library system and with parks in order to share that advertising.
Is that one of those things, JJ, where we're sort of caught in a semantic trap there, that, is there some way that we can limit it? I mean, I, I consider that kind of sign to be accessory, I don't consider it to be non-accessory, but I know the sign ordinance is drafted very narrowly, so I'm all right with them using it for the purposes he just described, I wouldn't want it used for advertising purposes or for truly non-accessory.
Could we not just limit the non-accessory portion to uses that exist along this portion of South Hudson and whatever that street is, is that-
Well, between the entities, that would be my recommendation.
I don't think so, but I think we should wait for our lawyer to come back and answer that.
I mean, because I, I think, to your point, it's the technical issue, it's because they're, it's going on the library's property, but it doesn't just advertise the library, so by definition, it's non-accessory.
Well, but the word non-accessory means that you could sell advertising to a strip club on 59th Street.
Right, I mean-
I mean, not that you're going to do that, but a, a non-accessory sign-
Bad example, but yes, yes. It, but, I don't, I mean, I don't know if you looked at it, but the, the issue is that this now makes a circle, like Hudson makes a wraparound circle there, so there's a continuation through street, I mean, I, again, we can defer to legal counsel on it, but-
We, I tell you, we have discussed that once before, and I think, well, we can listen to her, but I, my, my recollection is that it's, it's so narrowly drawn, that, because of the Bricktown sign, you remember, we discussed that, could we just advertise things, even just things like in that building? And that wasn't, not accessory enough, so, and-
And in the Bricktown, they sell Coors Light in Bricktown, so there's Coors Light ads running on those signs you're talking about, so limiting that, you gotta get real wordy in limiting that, or, you know-
Well, and I think there's some question about legally whether we have that capability, whether we have the capability to limit it.
The, the placement of the sign was for the new Hudson Avenue entrance, to try and drive people away from the, the one further north that led through the neighborhood and around Parmley. What was the other, oh, advertising. The, the split between the, the, the three partner entities would allow them to just focus on events at their facilities and their partners. So City County Health Department, you know, they, they've, they partner with WIC and, and different event, you know, if, I don't know that that is necessarily an accessory user, it's one of their, their trade partners, basically.
And I think, I think that does make it non-accessory, so I think we have to either go yea or nay on that, it's either an accessory sign or it's not.
We'll all just sit here until soon.
Until soon.
Awkward silence.
Well, I'll tell you what, let's do-
Anything else?
Let's, I, I don't have anything else, let's take a five-minute recess.
And for the record, there's just-
We'll be back at 2:46. Well, we still don't have counsel, but I think maybe we've talked ourselves out of worrying about it. Given, given the operator of the sign, I think it is safe to assume that there will not be any adult entertainment uses advertised, even if it is technically a non-accessory sign. So, and, you know, most reasonable businesses that would want to advertise on a non-accessory sign are not going to advertise on a sign that's turned off from dusk till dawn, so I think maybe we're just gonna, we can let this one go.
I know what the County Health Department's going to be doing in budget cuts, those arise, and selling advertisements.
Ah!
There she is.
Are you okay? And the question is, non-accessory or accessory signage? We're on item number seven. And if I recall correctly, if a sign is not strictly limited to the actual information and details of the owner of the sign, it's not accessory. In this case, they want to advertise their business partners or their supporting partners and so on. It's limited to other quasi-public entities, I gather. But, you know, nonetheless, it's not just the library. Right. I don't think we can limit the content of that. And if it's, if it's open to any other content than the library, it is by definition-
Non-accessory.
Non-accessory. So, yeah, I think that's just where we are. We're either going to vote for it or not, so.
Or worst case, they could just leave tomorrow and somebody else takes over that sign and-
Yeah, the library could go out of business and-
Yeah, and just start-
Or the City County Health Department could go out of business, I guess.
On stop.
So, is there anybody else present who wants to be, who wants to weigh in on this topic? If not, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of SPD level 4.3.
I second with the, with the amendment that the sign, the EMD sign be-
Yeah, the sign bowers or dusk till dawn, it's not operational.
Yep.
And just a point of reference, this isn't in Ward 7.
Right.
In Ward 4?
Ward 4.
Oh, how odd, okay. Okay, I have a motion, a second to approve item number seven. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Item number eight is an application by Great Plains National Bank to rezone 12,001 Northwest Expressway from SPD 638 to SPD 1144.
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Here on behalf of the applicant, who's also here with me, this is an SPD that would allow for a sign to be constructed that will allow the bank to alleviate some of the problems that they're currently facing with customers not being able to see their location. I do note that the TE asks that we remove the non-accessory sign. We agree to that. That was an error, perhaps on my part. There's no intent to have a non-accessory sign. The only sign that we seek is the accessory sign that's before you as Exhibit C in the spud and on the screen now. I'd like to have Mr. Winkle come up and talk to you about the problems they're having and why we're seeking to do this.
My name is Jay Winkle, 12,001 Northwest Expressway. I'm the president of the bank location we're talking about. We've been open about six and a half years, and on several occasions, there have been customers who have tried to find us that said that they drove right by us because they didn't see our sign sitting there. Because under the current SPUD, we are limited to a monument sign, which is approximately, it's not even quite as tall as I am, I'm about six feet tall. And so if you're coming up Northwest Expressway heading west, I come from the east heading west, there is a large sign in the, across Collingport Boulevard in that little strip center that is blocking our sign, ticket right up on it. If you're coming from the west heading east, during business hours, we have a parking spot right next to that sign. If like a pickup truck or something is parked in that spot, then you don't see our sign, which, you know, happens regularly during business hours, where customers parking there. And so the reason we're wanting this sign is so people can see us, because like you know, it's a 55 mile an hour zone right there, so people are coming, you know, pretty quick, quick clip by our building. The reason for, also, the current sign has an EMD on it, but it's low to the ground. There's nobody to see it, and so it's, you know, if we want to promote our CD specials, loan specials, or new products that we may be offering, or, you know, that we're hiring or whatever, they can't see it. And so we'd like to have it elevated up when people are driving down the road that they can, can see what we're promoting. That's, those are kind of some of the issues that we run into since we've been open.
So it's a little different from most applications where people are wanting signs just because they don't know. Here, we have a, an operator that knows that the sign height they have is not adequate because they have customers that have told them on multiple occasions, because of the speed to that area, that it just simply doesn't work. So what we're seeking to do is construct a sign that will allow the bank to properly identify themselves, so that the traveling public can turn in a timely manner. On behalf of answering questions, again, we do agree to TE number one.
You're removing the old sign?
I'm sorry.
You're removing the old sign? This sign takes the place?
Yes.
How does this compare to other signs of, you know, I apologize for not being very familiar with the area. Long way from home for me.
Sure.
But how does this compare to other signs? 50 feet just sounds humongous to me. That's the only reason why.
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet, okay.
The 50-foot sign was the EMD non-accessory that we agreed to delete. Yes, that would be large, perhaps seen from O'Carthy.
You also added use units in this application that weren't a part of the original. Is that also an error? Staff report indicates that there are some use units that were also added that weren't a part of the previous zoning.
Which ones are you concerned about?
The ones they list. So I just was curious why they're being added at this point. So you've got animal grooming and kennels, building maintenance services, personal services, research services, and indoor participant recreation.
We can take those out.
Okay. I figured it was an error after you said the sign thing.
So you want both animal sales, participant recreation, then which one?
What is it, research services, whatever that means?
Yeah, that's fine. We can just add that to the TE of uses to be removed.
Do uses have to do with the sign application?
Well, that's, that's why I was curious, that it was a sign application, but he is adding use units that weren't in the previous zoning. So I was just curious what, if there was a-
So we can't go, I mean, the reason we had to file a SPD is there's been a-
Why wouldn't that be-
A change in philosophy that I don't necessarily agree with, but the Board of Adjustment is no longer the avenue to go, because this would, this should have been an avenue, that we could go to the Board of Adjustment, simply get a variance to the sign limitations.
Right.
But because of a, because of a decision's been made, zoning was the only way to do it, and so that's why we're here.
Got it.
They automatically just have the uses, they've got to have something?
Yeah, I mean, I'm indifferent about the uses, candidly. I just thought that it was a mistake and an error. I didn't want that to get passed, you know, what, what everybody thought they were voting on, because it's not just a sign. We are, we are adding use units that didn't exist before this was zoned today.
Right. So how, I mean, how does that apply?
It would become a part of the zoning, they'd be allowed to use those use units going forward.
But we're fine with removing them. I mean, so what Commissioner Cravens has suggested is 8,300.8, 8,300.11, 8,300.55, and 8,300.62.
That's right.
We can add those to TE number one, the non-accessory shall be eliminated. So we can eliminate all of those uses plus the 8,300.66.
So I have some very real concern about this signage. I think we're just creating sign competition out there. There's very little, you know, significant signage in this area, and it seems to me that we are creating it, and that's bothersome to me. However, it seems to me that you're really making an argument that you would make, for instance, at the Board of Adjustment for variance, that there are physical conditions with respect to the speed of the highway and the limitation of the ability to see the existing signage.
That's right. I think we would easily meet the statutory elements. We're just not, it wasn't worth the time and effort to go argue that.
So, so I'll save the little speech that I had prepared about using SPUDs for signage. I, I'm not crazy about that either, but if you look at the purposes and intents of, for spuds and PUDs, signage is not one of them, nor does it really fit under any of the purposes and intents that are listed, but-
And I don't disagree, and I think as part of the code update, this is, you know, when you have literally one small piece of an overall zoning that forces you to go rezone an entire site, it doesn't make sense. Our process needs some tweaking to allow an amendment process like this.
Yeah, it's not worth 100 days plus of a rezoning application to deal with a sign. I agree with you there. This is a waste of resources on all part of the city, for sure.
Okay. Do we have any other questions of our applicant? Is there anybody else present who wants to be heard? No, I'll take a motion.
Motion approved with the stated TEs.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve item number eight as modified. Would you cast your votes, please? Commissioner, can you call?
Thank you.
It is approved. Okay, we're going to pick up the pace. It's 3 o'clock.
I'm bringing John back.
We're on item number nine.
Item nine is an application by Valencia Commercial Land to rezone 2313 Northwest 178th Street from PUD 1138 to SPUD 1145.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is an SPUD that will allow the subject site to be developed. Because of a strange way in which the site was attached to the land to the east and some setbacks that were in the old PUD, this particular site is no longer able to be developed because of the wide setbacks that exist from the, from the west. And so what we've done is tried to match the development regulations that exist in the overall PUD, but modify setbacks in a manner that would allow the site to actually be developed. And so there are four TEs, all of which we agree to. What you see there is slightly different. What we show here is an access point, which is what one of the TEs requested from staff. So we show that access point, and then we agree again to all the other TEs with landscaping, et cetera. So we'll simply allow this site to be developed because, as it stands right now, there'd be no way to develop it. We tried to do it through an administrative amendment, but the wide setbacks that existed because this was a piece of the site to the east, we, we were above the threshold allowed through the administrative amendment process.
Commissioners, I don't have anybody signed up to speak. Is there anybody here who wanted to be heard on this item?
My only issue on this one, the two use units that we saw that are kind of like the glamping application, sports and entertainment restricted and community recreation general, are you good limiting those to 50 people? 500 people's an awful lot of people.
Yeah, I mean, just the site itself, to meet parking requirements, would never allow.
I understand, but that's why I'm, I'd like to just limit it and just-
That's fine.
Yep. The only other thing I saw, how will that access to, is it Cristobal? How do you say that?
Works for me.
Okay. Where will that access point line up? That's what I was curious, is it going to line up across from that entrance to the neighborhood at least?
Correct.
Okay. Nope, I'm good.
Anybody else? No, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval to City Council on SPUD 1145, limiting use unit 8,300.69 and 8,250.2, 50 people instead of 500.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Item number nine is amended. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 10 is an application by Tin Horn Melody Investments to rezone 17645 North Pennsylvania from R1 to SPUD 1146.
Good afternoon, Tim Johnson with Johnsons and Associates here on behalf of the applicant. Here with me today is Mark Zizao and Samantha Kopanen with the applicant. So this is a, a pretty specific spud that will allow for us to do a daycare center next to the existing public school, Westfield School. The project is pretty straightforward. We did have some special things that were in the application that I'd like to explain. So we, for this particular use, we call out for the five-foot landscape buffer that you would normally have on all three sides. For this use, we are calling not to have that on this side because this area here is integrated in part of their outdoor play area for both toddlers and younger. So that would allow the turf to go all the way to the fence line. So if this use ever changed, that landscape buffer requirement would come back in. So it's pretty straightforward. There was a couple of questions that were brought up, one by the TE that the staff has put on there about wanting to stub driveways both to the south here, which we've attempted to get permission from the school to connect to that drive as a, as an assistant to the parents who may have a kid in daycare and then take their kid to the school, but they have determined that they don't want to do that. Then staff also asked for us to stub a drive to the north, which we don't think is applicable because, number one, we don't know what's going to go there. And so we would request that that TE be deleted.
So staff, wait, you guys don't own the parcel to the north. It's owned by somebody else. And, okay, yeah.
Yeah, so we would have to enter into some sort of cross-access agreement, and we don't even know who that is.
Know what's going to be developed there. That's a huge piece of land. It could be a grocery store for all you know, with, yeah, I get you.
So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
It was my understanding that staff is okay with the elimination of the stubs. JJ, am I right about that? Am I asking the wrong person? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we understand that the property to the north would be, you know, who knows what's going to happen there. Was there also a stub to the west?
West, and that's where we currently have the dumpster location, but it's the same deal. This property is not owned by us, and it'll probably be developed as some sort of a unit, like a residential subdivision.
So that's all, that's all the same property?
Correct.
So, yeah, access wouldn't be issued.
And I actually like that as much better place for the dumpster than in the front.
Correct.
So, okay. I don't have anybody signed up. Is there anybody who wanted to be heard on this item? If not, commissioners, do we have comments, questions? on this item? If not, commissioners, do we have comments, questions, concerns, or a motion?
I don't have any. If there's no further discussion on behalf of the commissioners, I'm ready to make a motion, seeing none. I'll make a mo, you good, Mary?
Second.
Oh. I'll make a motion to recommend approval to City Council on S-PUD 1146, subject to the elimination of, thank you, TE one.
I have a motion and second to approve item number 10 with the elimination of TE one. Could you cast your votes, please?
Thank you.
It is approved.
Item 11 has been continued. Item 12, application by Scooter's Coffee to rezone 2100 Northwest 145th Street from PUD 11, PUD 32 to S-PUD 1150.
Once again, David Box, on behalf of the applicant. This is an S-PUD that would allow for a coffee shop at 145th and Penn. The, the uses that we put in there are fairly limited. Instead of a C3 base, it's a C1 base, which is the, you know, the smallest base that you can have for, for commercial use. There are two TE's, both of which we agreed to. I think along Penn right there, this is a site that, you know, there's very limited things you could do on that site. It's a smaller building that we think will, will fit in quite nicely along Penn. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You are in agreement with TE's?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't have anyone signed up to speak. Is there anyone who wanted to be heard on this item? Commissioners?
One thing on this, I got an email from a constituent or someone in Ward 8 that was concerned. We saw a case last time or two times ago, get lost, in the same general area. It was about office development. We had the big discussion about whether or not we should put in traffic. I know subsequent to that, there was some discussion about the traffic impact fees versus when a developer is required to put infrastructure in. And I hate that Tim just left, because I know he was involved in that meeting and I couldn't make it. I, I would like to get some information from staff after today so that I can respond to this person. Frankly, his, his email was extremely articulate and well said, and I've looked at it and thought, he's making some really good points here. And I want to be able to get back to him. But this area, if you look at it, I spent some time with it. I got the email and, and looked at it more broadly. There's a major congestion here, and, and it really is, my position still doesn't change that we did the right thing by not requiring a bunch of things for a developer who's putting in some office lots. But I, I hope that this is an area, and I wasn't sure if maybe this area got some geo-bond money from 17 or what. But it's, the arterials, I think, are the issue. So I'm concerned. I support the application. There's another one coming right behind this one. That's, it's for a school.
There are three of them, yeah.
And there's, and I don't want to jump the gun, but I've got some real queuing concerns on that one. But at any rate, I think we need to be pretty thoughtful as we look at the area here and know when traffic things are going to be improved. So, sorry to jump us off track, but it's related to the next several applications, so.
Now, I think this, this, not this particular application, but, but the, the three that are on the agenda for today are, you know, great illustrations of why, once upon a time, there was a grand vision that when this area was developed, you know, there would be a plan for the movement of traffic throughout it. And there, you know, all, the developer of the giant piece of property would share in that cost and, and in the planning. But, you know, over the years, when that didn't happen and it got carved up into these little pieces, what you're left with are, you know, users like this, who, of course, it doesn't make any sense at all for that burden to fall on them. So...
I'm definitely going to call and complain to my councilperson about the, about the congestion in the area Ward 8. I mean, look, this is a heavy, heavily lived-in and commerce area. It generates a lot of sales tax. There's a lot here. It's in need of infrastructure. It's pretty desperate.
Watermark in 145, or 145th, as I understand it, narrows as it goes from west to east from like 70 feet of right-of-way down to 40 feet of right-of-way or something. It was, it's ridiculous.
Yeah.
So it's just, it's a mess.
Yeah.
And, and it's being, you know, developed more and more as we go along here. So...
JJ, I'd like to catch you on that after the meeting so I can get some information. But with that, at least for this one, I'll make a motion to recommend approval to City Council on S-PUD 1150, subject to technical evaluations, which you agreed to. Second.
I have a motion and second to approve item number 12, subject to TE's. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Item number 13, application by Edmund Public Schools to rezone 21, 2301 Northwest 145th Street from PUD 1577 to single-family residential.
Mark Ferris, Red Plains Professional, 2933 South Bryan Avenue, representing Edmund Public Schools. The item before you, as you're aware, is to allow for an elementary school to be constructed on approximately 16 and 1/2 acres of land between Northwest 145th and the dead end of W.P. Atkinson Boulevard. We've had extensive discussions with Planning Department and the Traffic Engineering Department, Transportation Department concerning this application. Edmund Public Schools, as well as the current landowner, have both agreed to extend W.P. Atkinson. We have a letter that was submitted to both Transportation and Planning confirming by the seller of the property that they will grant a 60-foot of right-of-way, effectively creating a collector on W.P. Atkinson, as well as Edmund Schools will grant the additional right-of-way to increase the existing right-of-way of 50 feet to 60 feet across their southern or across 145th Street. All of the other staff comments, we are in agreement with. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Commissioner Cravens, did you have more that you wanted to say about that?
Yeah, so I'm, I don't have any problem with the application. I mean, frankly, an elementary school over here probably helps a lot of the housing, apartments, all this stuff, making it easier for these folks to get to and from school. So that's all great. I want to figure out, we've had some discussions recently about specific plans and, and how we need to memorialize our zoning documents so that we have the ability to review it. I'm very concerned about the queuing and the traffic circulation here. And I want to make sure that we can try to, I should, I should have caught staff before this, but that we can review that at the specific plan stage, the ability to do that. And I'm curious as to how we can do that. This is a big concern over here. So what are my, what are our options?
If I might, in talking with the Transportation or the Traffic Engineers Office, I said that very same thing. And he said, well, typically, they don't get to review building permit applications. And I told him that, well, we're committed to providing you with the site plan as soon as there is one, so that we can get your comments and suggestions on that very thing of queuing. Edmund Schools is very aware of the congestion that it's created with parents picking up, dropping off students. And they go to great expense in trying to create the queuing lengths to keep the soccer moms, so to speak, off of the city streets. So, I'm sorry.
Well, no, I mean, that's the, the issue is we're changing it from a PUD to R1, so we're losing that. And I'm trying to, I mean, that makes me very, very nervous. The queuing and circulation part makes me very nervous, because Watermark, as, as Chairwoman Powers pointed out, is limited. It's also actually a through street. So it connects May Avenue and Penn together through this development. And so, and it's going to continue to carry a lot of traffic. And so then you're going to put an elementary school that if it happens to spill out into, to Northwest 145th, is going to create a problem. And somewhere along the way, as we discussed in our last applications, there's going to be a signalized intersection here. And Tim Johnson, who just left, knows it's coming. So, I mean, it's, that's an issue we're going to have to tackle, but we're approving this and we're allowing the zoning, which does prevent us from reviewing it, which is, which is my real concern. And I think it's a very legitimate thing to review. There's also Gambel's Trail Drive right there, which is the street that the, the Ward 8 resident that emailed me mentioned. And the same thing would be a problem. It spills out, if traffic spills out there, you're going to block congestion that comes out of this on Northwest 150th. So, again, I'm not, I want to be clear, I'm, I am in favor. I don't have any issue with this, but I want to be very conscientious that we do the right thing. And I think it would be the right thing to potentially put this into a PUD of sorts where we could review that site plan and have the ability to specifically for queuing and circulation, when it comes back, when you're ready to build the building, whether that's two years from now or 10 years from now, we have the chance to review that part of it. Because there's going to be a lot of development, as you see today, that's going to take place between now and the time you start turning dirt.
I agree with that. And, and that was my initial thought about this application as well. I think it needs to be in a PUD, because I think, although it's hard to look at the property and, and actually, I guess I could say it's not really appropriate for straight R1 zoning in the sense that I wouldn't want to see single-family houses here. I'm not sure. But, I mean, it's generally considered the lowest and, you know, least impactful kind of zoning we have. But at the same time, I mean, knowing that it's going to be a school site, that's a great thing, I think. This is probably a great location for the, and, and all that. But, yeah, yeah. And especially with all of the, you know, multifamily residential uses that are so close by. But I do think, just because access is such a mess.
Well, and we've had, if you guys will recall, we've had other folks come in when we've had applications for, for other schools that are being built, and the neighbors are like, the neighbors that are around these areas going, wait a minute, where are these cars going to go? They spill out now onto these side streets. I think we had that issue out in Mustang, as I recall, in Ward 3, with very similar deal. And so you just look at this area, you see how congested it is. We just had this big battle about missing infrastructure and who's going to pay for it. These are things we're not, it's above our pay grade. We're not going to decide them. But I don't want to put something like this in and not be able to review the site plan when it's going to have a big impact on it. So...
If I might, the present schedule for this bond money is to start construction in the spring of 2020 and open a year later. So it's not that they're banking the land. It is, it is absolutely coming. The existing elementary schools on Northwest 150th are beyond capacity. So it's absolutely needed. They're going to build it. It's coming. What I would like to offer, and I completely understand the concerns in that you would like to review the site plan, of course, time is of the essence. But what I would like to suggest, based upon some comments that I heard earlier, is that you do rely on your professional staff to make suggestions and to make recommendations to you. So what I'd like to recommend is that we, when the site plan is prepared and we know what the queuing lengths are, absolutely we'll submit that to your Traffic Engineering Department for suggestions and comments. And if we need to come back for you, we'll be glad to do that. It's just a timing issue that we need to get the zoning so that they can close, so that they can purchase the land, so the architect can start, and so on and so forth, because the school is absolutely needed. And the delays just push that opening date beyond their projected school year. So whatever we can do, or whatever Edmund Public Schools can do to alleviate your concerns on the queuing, we'll be more than glad to do that.
Staff's going to have to convince me there's another avenue to ensure that we have the ability to review it before a site plan is approved. And I don't think that they can do that if it's R1 zoning. You, and he's shaking his head. So I'm, I'm just one commissioner, it's my word, but I'm just one commissioner. But I can't support the application without being able to see a specific plan on queuing and circulation for the school because of how, what a problem area this is for traffic and to contribute to that further. I just, I can't support that. I just can't.
I do appreciate the legality of that. I understand that because it's straight R1 zoning, that there are certain things that are not required by law to be done.
It's not, it's not just that they're not required. We do not have the authority.
No, I understand. I, I do absolutely appreciate that. And I think you also appreciate the needs of Edmund Schools and what they want to do. I don't know what else I could do other than to, to say that they are absolutely willing to work with the staff and provide whatever drawings anybody desires, so that you can see what great lengths that they go to. This is probably a $12 to $15 million facility. So they'll absolutely...
Look, I, I get all that. You guys have to manage the schools. We got to manage the streets. That's where these, these two worlds collide. I'm monopolizing discussion. I'll turn it over to my other commissioners. I, I can't support the application unless it comes back in, in a PUD.
And I'm, I'm right there, too. So... Others?
I, I think, I definitely am sure your concern about the traffic issues. I admittedly don't spend quite very much time north of Quail Springs, so I have to admit that I have not been there. So I can't say that I've, I believe it. But I, I do, I'm very sensitive to the fact that there's a need for the school district to have the school. I also think that it's in the school district's best interest to make sure that the traffic flow is sufficient and that it's safe enough for them to be able to, to move families in and out of the school. So to me, they are the ones with, with a sufficient incentive to make it work. But I do agree that, that it is an important issue. And I, I think ideally, it would have been a PUD so that we could have our direct input on it. But I don't, it's, it just, it seems to me like we're going to delay the, what is it, we're going to add another 100 days to the, to the process by coming back?
I, I don't think that's true at all. I think if we make, if we continue this application for three weeks, something tells me he's going to come back with a PUD ready to go as an amended application. Is that possible? Or would that have to be re-noticed? Re-noticed? So what does that delay him, a month? Okay, so we're going to delay it a month. That's...
And no additional expense to the, I don't know how that works. Okay, just ask him.
I think you make, I think you make a good point. I'm just balancing the two issues in favor of our purview over the roads and the streets and the infrastructure against Edmund Schools' desire to move this along quickly. And I don't think that a month is going to change the fact they're going to build this school. I think it's going to change the fact that we have the ability, when they start the development process, to review how that's going to affect these interconnecting streets, which really tie this whole square mile together. And so I just, I, that's my, that's where I balance it in favor of. But you make a very good point. It's a very good point.
So from a process standpoint, if we were to grant a continuance, they would then have the, does this give the school district an opportunity then to then say, we'll just resubmit it as a PUD, we'll re-notice and we'll move on, rather than just us having this up or down vote? Or I guess if we went ahead and had the up or down vote, they would then have to just go, they saw the opportunity to go before the City Council?
I, you know, I do think that, that this is one of our, our most difficult, but also most serious responsibilities. And I, I do think the delay is unfortunate, but manageable, a project this size. And I just cannot support it as a straight zoning. I just cannot. So...
With that being said, then we request the continuance for three weeks.
Okay. Then we need to request a continuance for the, the second meeting in September, right, in order to allow for re-notice? Or what, what do we need to do there to ensure we comply legally?
You'd go to 1010, October 10.
October 10. So that's a little over a month from today. Okay. Is that, anybody else speak up? I, I mean, okay. Well, if there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion to continue, item number 13, PC 10600, to the October 10th Planning Commission Meeting.
I have a motion and second to continue, item number 13, to October the 10th. Could you cast your votes, please? It is continued.
Item 14 is an application by Scott Case for a specific plan pursuant to the approval of PUD 1523, located at 14620 Mezzaluna Avenue.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Scott Case, Case and Associates, 4200 East Skelly Drive, Suite 800, Tulsa, Oklahoma. I'm here to answer any questions. We've met with staff several times, and we are in support with the staff's recommendation.
Just point out for the sake of discussion, this is also going in the exact same area. And how many units is this going to add?
It's going to be 299 units.
299 units. Thank you.
Yes.
It's a specific plan, as it were. Staff indicates this specific plan meets the technical requirements of PUD 1523, so I don't have any questions or comments.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here today that wanted to be heard on this item? Commissioners, do we have any questions of our applicant?
We've...
I'm sorry. Come forward, please. We're still not up to your item, are we? We're still not up to your item, are we?
Well, Palmer, 7809 Northwest 84th Street. When I look at something like this, I say to my, or I ask myself, how many units are going to be vacated because of this? And where is this place anyway, here in the city?
Would you direct your questions to us?
So then the price of these units will be quite high. So a person working on minimum wage, will they be able to afford these?
We can't, we can't, we can't answer that.
Okay. Well, that's a question. Person working on minimum wage, can they afford all of this? And what units are going to be, that are occupied now, will be vacated because of that and create blight because of this? And those are just some thoughts that always go through my mind when I see a large rental unit coming in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just as a reminder to the commission, where this is not a zoning request, it's a specific plan approval.
Is there?
A second.
Yep. Is there anything else? If not, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the specific plan for PUD 1523, item number 14.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to approve item number 14, specific plan from 14620 Mezzaluna Avenue. Could you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Item 15 is an application by Silver Cross Business Park to rezone 8101 Silver Crossing from the P, from PUD 806 to PUD 1731.
Once again, David Box, on behalf of the applicant, this is an application for PUD 1731 that will take it from what would allow multifamily to a light industrial office warehouse type development. My client did have the opportunity to have a neighborhood meeting with the folks in the neighborhood to the west. My understanding is that there was generally positive discussion. There was some excitement that the ability to develop multifamily was going to go away. Instead, it would be, what you're seeing here is other developments that my client has done. This was also shown to the neighbors. There was an excitement that it was going to be something like this that generates more of an eight to five type of operator, rather than a big multifamily project, again, which could be built today. So seeing, Cindy, would you go to the aerial? We divided this into three tracks. If you look at track one, the base zoning district in track one is single-family residential. You'll see on the far west side of the, of the subject site, there's a drainage ditch. So all of track one is in that drainage ditch. It's somewhere between 80 and 90 feet. The only purpose of track one is to provide a buffer. So there will be this 80 to 90-foot buffer in this track one that can't be developed before you get to then the light industrial that exists within the balance of the PUD. What you tend to see are electricians, plumbers, things like that, the type of product that the LOLs build is what's before you. We've had several other applications on their behalf in Oklahoma City. And like I said, these aren't renderings, these are exactly what will be built pursuant to the development regulations contained in the PUD. I do want to address the TEs. TE number one, it asks to delete the wholesale distribution and fast food drive, or fast food with drive-through. What we asked to do is modify TE1 to read, limit fast food with drive-through in track two to a minimum distance of 400 feet east of the western line of track two. So again, we have this 80 to 90 feet within track one, and then what we're saying is, from that western line of track two, additional 400 feet to the east. But we can't take out the wholesale distribution use unit. That is one of the uses we need for that electrician, plumber, et cetera. The only place you're likely to see a fast food restaurant is obviously along Wilshire. But by moving it 400 feet east of the western line of track two, I think we've satisfied the concerns of staff as it relates to being close to residential. Worth noting, I wasn't, we weren't aware of any concern with that use unit with the neighbors. TE number two, we'd ask to revise that to read, limit access to West Wilshire to three per track two and two per track three. This is still less than what exists today in the PUD, and it's forcing shared access. So we certainly are in agreement with that. But because of the amount of frontage we have there on Wilshire, we'd ask for two within track two and two within track three. Three within track two, two within track three. TE number three is asking us to connect Glade Avenue. That is the street to the east. We can't. It's a legal impossibility. There are limits of no access that exist within the plat to our east, so we couldn't connect if we wanted to. So when I showed that plat to staff, staff agreed that the TE should just be deleted. TE number four, provide a site design that requires buildings that front Silver Crossing with parking behind. So what we tend to see that type of development is a commercial or retail type development, not in an office warehouse. What we can agree to is that we will have no overhead doors facing Silver Crossing. Presumably, that's what the concern was of staff, is that industrial feel. So we can agree that there won't be any overhead doors that face Silver Crossing. TE five, provide a 15-foot greenbelt with trees on the western side of track two. Because of the inclusion of track one being that 80 to 90-foot buffer, I don't think it's necessary to buffer ourselves from ourself, so we'd ask to just delete that. And finally, TE number six, what we'd ask for is a 50-foot centers rather than 30-foot center, but we agree to do the street trees on both Wilshire and Silver Crossing. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have and ask for your approval.
Commissioners, do we have any questions of our applicants?
I just want to make sure I got all those straight. On TE one, that's what we're, we're going to, you're offering up a 400-foot essentially setback from track one for those two use units?
For only, not both of them, just the fast food with drive-through.
Okay, so you wanted to strike wholesale distribution?
Correct. So what I would like it to read is, limit fast food with drive-through in track two to a minimum distance of 400 feet east of the western track two property line.
Okay. And then what did you say on, what did you say on TE two?
TE two, I'd like it to read, limit access to West Wilshire to three per track two and two per track three. So there will be three access points on Wilshire in track two and two access points on Wilshire in track three.
And you can meet the separation requirements?
Yes, sir.
Because you're, okay. So the, and then three, four, and five, you want to delete and then, okay, got it.
Why do you feel like you need so many access points under Wilshire?
Well, because they're still going to be, it's going to be platted, which is the next case, and it's still, there's a chance to have, I think, five lots in track two. So we're still forcing shared access, and we still will exceed separation requirements. And it's going down from what's permitted now.
So then again, it's the only what?
It's going down from the number of access points that are permitted under the PUD 806. But when you have these type of users, you can't force that many lots to share access. It becomes problematic. But we will have shared access with the three in track two.
Okay.
I was trying to look at the plat very quickly to see if it shows up on there. I mean, what is the dimensions of these lots that are front Wilshire? What are the, well, actually, just what is the size of those lots?
I'm going to have Mark Grubbs, who's the civil engineer, answer that.
You have approximately 165-foot frontage of these lots that are affording on Wilshire on both sides of the street. See that in your next item is preliminary accompanying preliminary plat. And there are five lots here, which if you share access between all five of them, then you have three. And like David said, it currently permits, I believe, four or five west of there and three east.
Just based on separation requirements, you mean, it would allow for up to?
Under the PUD.
No, the post specifically listed number that were allowed in the old PUD. So we're going down from what's specifically listed.
Okay.
Is there anybody else here who wanted to be heard on this item? Come forward, please. Give us your name and address for the record.
This is the one I intended to talk about. I got confused between 15 and 16, so I apologize for that. Well, Palmer, 7809 Northwest 84th Street. And I live at the top. See where it says R1? I live west of there. No, I live in R1. I was in a meeting about several weeks ago, the Wilshire Ridge Association meeting, and I asked the people that lived backing that, and I asked them, why would they want that? And they said that they would prefer to have that in light industrial instead of having apartments. So being in the group, I went with their idea, suggestion, agreement that this would be the best for it. Now, just to visit with you all, I remember, when I was married in Tulsa, one, I remember one time that the fam, that we were in a restaurant in Tulsa, in a corner. It was in the vicinity of Mingo, 31st, 41st, somewhere around there, back in the late And I counted, well, let's, let's look at it this way. I had $1 to spend in a rest, in that restaurant. I had $1 to spend. And there was 14 restaurants, up and down, north, south, east, west. There was 14 fast food restaurants. And I only had $1 to share, to spend. So, let's see, I'm trying to think of the word. Well, it's like in the restaurant business, 20% of the businesses do 80% of the, of the business. So 80%, you're going to have eventually 80% failure. So the fewer restaurants, the more successful they're going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here who wishes to be heard on this item? Would you come forward, sir? Give us your name and address for the record.
Charles Mullins, 7904 Northwest Ridge Drive, Oklahoma City. I just have one real quick question. When you're talking about 400 feet from track two, or 400 feet from the lot two, or proposed lot two, where are we talking about on Wilshire that you would be talking about a drive-through?
So a minimum distance of 400 feet east of this line right here.
400 feet east of that line?
Right. So, I mean, it's going to limit it somewhere in there.
Okay. And you're saying that all of the area that's there on the side of the drainage ditch, on the west side of the drainage ditch, is kind of like a no man's land? They're not going to be?
Correct.
Anything proposed or put in that area? It's more or less a utility easement at this point in time?
Correct. The way that the PUD works is, it's its own tract and will serve as a buffer.
Okay.
Nothing could be developed pursuant to this PUD in that tract.
All righty, that answers my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer, you had something else?
Thank you. In the meeting that I was referring to earlier, Brent Lowell was presenting this. And his comment about what he just mentioned was supposed to be on the purview of the, or discretion of the person renting or buying the adjacent property there. So which, which is it?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
The, this no man's land that he mentioned, is it, will it be our association that will be responsible for that upkeep? And that's a concrete ditch.
It will not be your association that will be responsible for that.
But if it gets out of hand, then we would have recourse?
The city will, I assume, make sure that it's well-kept?
We'll have to make sure we're in accordance with all zoning regulations in terms of height. And so, yeah, the recourse would be, you would call the action center to make sure that we are in compliance with all the ordinances.
Well, right now, we mow it.
Well, you can stop doing that, I assume.
I was, I, well, that crossed my mind at the time. Officially, I didn't know how this would be addressed, I guess.
Well, it would be part of the PUD, that, I said, S-PUD, I'm sorry, it's PUD, and it will specify that nothing can be built in there, that it will remain open space.
Okay.
They'll form a community.
Yeah. Well, the way, in the meeting, the impression that I got was that if the owner of the adjacent property ran or owner, that they could, they had, it was part of their property, but to their discretion, whether to let us have it or them keep it. But you're saying it is city?
No, I'm saying that it is their property, they have the responsibility to maintain it, nothing can be built there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do we have any other questions of our applicants? If not, I'll take a motion.
What if we just strike it in track two and not track three?
Sorry, I'm trying to flip to the map, forgive me.
So, yeah, no, track two is west of Silver Crossing.
Track, you'd limit it to track three?
Correct. So strike it in track two, do not strike.
And east of that is industrial development, right?
Correct.
It's not residential.
Correct.
I'm, I mean, I'm okay with that. I don't mean to speak out of turn. My reason for doing that is, even though there's a buffer there, if somebody came along and wanted to build it in track two, there are going to be a four or five-story motel off the back fence of these residences. I get real protective of that because of Turtle Creek. So just, I'm mentally scarred from that deal.
Airbnb's in a storage center, maybe?
Yeah. I'm, I'm good with that. I don't have a problem with track three because of what's adjacent to it, so.
Okay.
Can I have a motion?
I'll, okay, I'll make the motion. I'll make a motion to recommend approval of city council on PUD 1731, amending track two to exclude lodging accommodations, deleting TE three, four, and five, and amending TE one. one to specify that fast food with drive-through shall be limited to development 400 feet east of, from track one. Amending TE two to state, limit access to West Wilshire to three per track two and two per track three. And amending TE number six to stipulate that street trees will be on 50-foot centers, not on 30-foot centers.
And including a notation that no overhead doors will face Silver Crossing?
But you're, you're amending TE one as I requested.
Yeah, I'm amending the language of TE one, so I'm amending it, deleting what's there and replacing it with limiting the development of fast food drive-through to 400 feet east from track one.
Got it.
Good with that?
With the notation that there's no overhead doors facing Silver Crossing?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion of second to approve item number 15 with the amendments listed. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 16 is a preliminary plat of Silver Cross Business Park at North Council Road and north of Wilshire Boulevard.
One last time, David Box, 522 Concord Drive. This is the associated plat with the PUD that you just recommended for approval. In terms of these TEs, we'd ask to delete TE number two. I don't think we need the variance. A defer to staff, again, that is the request to extend a glade, which we can't do. We agree with then TE one, three, four, and five. I do want to make clear on TE four that we certainly agree with the sidewalks, but, and I talked to JJ, just wanna make sure it's on the record, that it's per lot as it develops, and that the developer isn't required to go out day one and build sidewalks throughout this whole development. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any additional questions and ask for your approval.
So no additional wording is needed to specify that?
I don't think so. I just wanted to make it clear.
I don't think so either. I think that's, yeah, I think that's the way it works.
I believe so, too.
So do we need the variance? Or can we?
No, we can delete the TE. And do we have any questions of our applicants? Is there anybody present who wishes to be heard on this item? I'll take a motion.
I'm, make a motion to approve the preliminary plat, C 796, deleting TE number two. Second.
I have a motion of second to approve item number 16, deleting TE two. Cast your votes. It is approved.
Thank you.
Um, is this? Oh, yes, we did continue this one, didn't we? Okay, that concludes our items to be heard for today. Everything else got continued. Um, so, let me go back to my, um, so, additional items, communications and reports, planning commission committees, planning commission members, um, planning department, development services departments, municipal councilor's office, citizens to be heard. Mr. Warrior, did you have something you wanted to tell us today? Other business? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion of second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourned.